Guys, for coming out this evening and taking time out of your busy schedule and showing support for the City of Critten, I really appreciate that. At this time, the council will look at the agenda and they will either approve or delete anything on that agenda.
I'd like to add a discussion about fiber optic Internet services to the agenda.
I don't know how we do this, but I'd like to add the first reading to the news board, ma'am.
You want to read that?
I'd like to add about the years resolution, and I'll explain that later on, too. And also, a public works report, and that will explain that in when we start talking about the treasury report and everything, then we'll show what I'm talking about.
Anyone else?
Well, just one question, and it's not an add or a subtract, maybe it's an order of execution of the agenda. We have on here the executive session here. I don't know if we're going to go in the order straight from top to bottom, but should we just move that to very bottom?
We're going to start with the bottom. Yes, yes. Anyone else? I need a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
I'll make a motion.
Give me a second.
Okay. Danny?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Earlene?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Paula?
Yes.
Thank you. At this time, we will look at the inaugural minutes from November 1st, 2019. It is ready for approval at this time, subject to any deletions, additions, or corrections.
We got an extra copy of the second page. Was there a change?
It was the last page, and it was on the motion by Paula, second by Earlene, go John to the next. That's what I changed on.
Oh, okay.
What was changed between the copy we originally got?
The original one said motion carried all yes, so I just took that off. On the very last sentence.
Motion carried by all yes, okay, correct.
Is there any status change to the recycle bin? Are we going to get the recycle bin?
The last that I had spoke to Tom, he was looking for one, and that's all I've heard so far.
Mayor, I don't understand what you mean. He was looking for one?
Yeah, recycle bin.
Tom who, from Republic?
Republic Service.
They have them? Okay. But you're going to check on getting one back here?
He advised that we need six inches of concrete to sit that on.
How wide, how long? Don't know.
There's two different types of bins that he was looking into. He's just called me back, so.
Well, thank you for checking out on that.
Need a motion to approve the minutes this evening?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
I'll say it.
Danny?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Earlene?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Paula?
Yes.
At this time, we have the treasurer's report for the month of October, November 2019, is ready for approval at this time, subject to any corrections.
Treasurer's report for December 3rd, 2019, the general fund had $569,471.09. Municipal road aid had $34,623.21. Certificate of deposit were $2,898,316.05. Totals are as of November 30th, 2019. The checks are before you.
I had a question about the City of Rock Ridge Countywide ambulance. It looks like we have spent a larger portion than I expected, so I guess they're having a lot more runs than we expected they were going to.
What it looks like to me, Jen, if we're going over the, excuse me, council numbers, going over those runs, there are some runs that people didn't even live at those addresses. Also, there was four of them to the fire department itself, and I talked with Rodney, Chief Rodney, about that. We are having a meeting next week in reference to the MS runs, and we're pretty much at the limit of the 42,000 that was approved by council that paid for the countywide ambulance service. That answer your question?
Yeah, I think it, you know, that's what I thought it looked like, and that's what I was asking. On the capital software on 11-5, $300, what was that for?
That is for our tax program. We have to pay them quarterly to maintain the support and everything to that program, and that helps with any kind of imports or anything we have to do with the taxes.
So Megan, that's $1,200, approximately $1,200 a year?
Yes, it has always been that.
And the $1,347 to Kentucky Lika Cities, is that an employee benefit, or?
That, yes, that's the insurance payment to Kentucky Lika Cities.
And the reimbursement decay pattern on 11-27, what was that for?
That is, we're having an open house on December 21st for the community, and we're getting Christmas items together for that for the children, have Santa Claus coming in and being here for the kids in the community, and I'd like for all to attend to that if they could.
Mayor, that's December what?
The 21st at 6:00 PM to 8:00.
8:00 until?
6:00, 6:00 PM to 8:00.
Oh, 6:00, okay.
Are you going to put that on Facebook?
We're going to put that on Critten City News Yes.
Megan, this 5:21 for penalties, where did that?
Those are if anybody's paid their taxes late and they had to pay penalties on their tax bills. So those have probably been for 2018 or prior taxes.
Was that a discussion on the income from the property tax? Was that the question, income?
It was penalties.
While we're on that subject, could I build on, and this is kind of an overarching question, not a detailed one. I was looking, first of all, I really liked the way you did this. It was very easy to compare, I don't like the scans sideways, but it was easy to compare those. So my question's on the income from property taxes, and the budget was November year-to-date, something about $467,000, and we've got...
Let me see, hold on.
265, I guess, that's come in, round numbers. Does it come in in lumps, or is there different periods in the year that some of those property taxes come in, or are they just not all recorded at this point in time?
If you're looking at the November page?
Yeah, the November page.
Okay. We budgeted $295,000, that's for the real estate taxes. That has, we've taken in $249,000 today. That's people trying to get the discount amount, so we still have $167,000 out, which, you know, they have to leave somewhere with their purse to pay those. That's just property taxes.
That's about the delta, okay.
Yeah.
I wanted to say it looked like that we are on target for our payroll expenses. I appreciate that. I did have a question about, another question, I brought this up last time, about the land cleanup, $36,474, and I don't think we have a line item on our budget for that, so you were going to check with the auditors about how to handle that?
Yes. Hopefully, one of you all can help me on that question. We have spent $36,474 in the cleanup at 208 North Main. That was in the, in the previous budget. I know we didn't pay for those bills until after July 1st, so I didn't know if we pushed back into the old budget or how we were going to handle that.
Since they were paid this year and deferred during this year, they were reflected in this year's expenditure.
Okay.
So we're going to have to, we're going to have to do amendment to the budget for that, is that correct?
Yes.
That's what I thought.
Anything else I can say? Need a motion to approve the treasurer's report this evening?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
I'll say it.
Now, before you go, and by the way, are we looking at these crossways pages, too? Is this what we're looking at, too?
Yes. Yes. Danny?
Oh, I did have one more question.
Okay. Is there any overtime in this month's financial work?
No, unless it's an emergency, there won't be no overtime.
Anything unusual out of this one?
Not that I know of. Anything that you see, Councilwoman, unusual?
That's what I was asking. You all look, I do, I wish I could. So are we even talking about the receipts? Are we getting ready to approve the receipts that were passed out?
Getting ready to.
Yes, everything.
Okay, I've got a question, and this is why I'm asking for if we could possibly ever get a public works report, because I could only imagine that the whippy dip receipts were for food for the prisoners.
Correct.
Okay, it would help, it would help us, and I think it would show, too, what's going on in the city, that we are getting inmates in to help with the city, that JD's helping supervise, and he's had to buy them food. If we can get a public works monthly report that he had this many inmates for the month, or this many days, and this many hours, and what they did in the city, in the public works, it would help us feel, I think, it'd help me with the whippy dip stuff and the things. That's all I'm asking, is if we could get a public works report.
Any more on the treasurer's report, Danny?
What's the Mountain Dew for? Let me find it.
Saying they needed a drink.
Okay, I drink water, but is the Mountain Dew for JD, was the Mountain Dew for?
I don't drink Mountain Dew.
Huh?
I don't drink Mountain Dew.
But there was a receipt for Mountain Dew in here, turned in.
Was that for the inmates, JD?
Apparently it was. What else is with it? I've never seen JD drink Mountain Dew.
Help me, it's here, I saw it.
When the inmates come out and help the community, we're going to feed them, and we're going to give them something to drink. That's, yeah, that was for the inmates. We're demanding...
Oh, that's probably a 12-pack of Mountain Dew I bought.
Yes.
I thought you said one Mountain Dew.
No, 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 12-pack.
Yeah, they have to directly feed the house up a bird.
All right. And when I took the class about, I mean, we didn't have to buy them soft drinks, I mean, it's nice to splurge on the materialize, I agree, we beat them. That's why if you just get a monthly report on public works, and then when these receipts come out, they should be self-explanatory and take up less time.
That's a day-to-day operations, Councilman. Anybody want to approve?
Is it a day?
We have a second on the trip.
Mayor is the...
Are you talking about the treasurer's report?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Is that this treasurer's report, is that, Mayor, to the day-to-day operations of the city?
The receipts from the inmates or anything that pertain to what goes on during the weekends.
Okay, what I'm saying, Mayor...
We gave the receipts just to show you guys where the money, you know, we're transparent.
But I don't know, Mayor, just work with me, I'm trying to be respectful. I'm trying to understand what the receipts are for, they're not listed for inmates, food or meals like that, that's why I was asking for if we could have a public works report about what's going on in the city, and because this is the day-to-day operation, what you're talking about.
If you, if you look at the fork bank, the fork bank where it's the credit cards?
Yes.
The bill?
Yes.
It has the numbers out beside them, so like, where it says Marathon 653, that's for, if you look at the paper that's sideways, that'll show you that's for the city truck for gas.
Okay.
The numbers are written on there. And then the 654, that is for workers lunch.
65's for workers lunch?
Yes, 654.
While we're on that, Megan?
Yes.
I'm sorry to hold this up, but on October the 7th, there's a charge on the credit card for $649 for QV support?
Yes, that's QuickBooks. Our QuickBooks, I don't know if it was due to the computer or whatever, but it crashed, the database in QuickBooks crashed, so we had to pay for support for them to rebuild it.
Okay.
So that's a maintenance agreement we have with them?
Yes, that's for a year, from the date of that service for a year, that will be our support.
Okay. Councilwoman, you requested that JD get the inmates and clean out that house, and you see the pictures up there on the board, how devastating that house was left in, and if they walk back a Mountain Dew for the week for what they've done, I think that's okay.
Okay, like I said, Mayor, all due respect, I didn't know what the Mountain Dew was for, that's why I asked for a treasury report. I should have printed out pictures of my kids and what the kids and I picked up off the front porch. So you're right, it was a mess, I know, I walked through the place. JD, you and the inmates did a real good job.
And that wasn't JD's job, you know, it's not JD's job, it's not in his job description, but he did it out of respect for you and the kids.
Thank you, and thank you again, JD.
So can I do my own call? Danny, for the treasurer's report?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Earlene?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Paula?
Yes.
At this time, we're going to skip down to the audit report with Ms. Hun, with Bram Lon Ackley.
Good evening, everyone, I'm Stephanie Hewn, and this is Kristin Berger. We're the CPAs at Bram Lon Ackley. Oops, I'm sorry, can you get that better? Start over. I'm Stephanie Hewn, and this is Kristin Berger. We're the CPAs at Bram Lon Ackley. We completed the audit of the city for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2019, and I believe Megan has copies that she's distributed to everyone. This evening, we're going to go through the audit report. If you have any questions, don't hesitate to interrupt us, we can answer those as we go along, or at the end, we'll answer questions as well. On page 1 and 2, you'll find our independent auditor's report. This is one of the two reports that we're issuing in, from our audit. The financial statements themselves are the statements of the council and the city. Management is responsible for preparing the financial statements in accordance with U.S. accounting principles. And then our responsibility, as outlined in that statement, is to express an opinion on those financial statements in accordance with U.S. generally accepted auditing standards, also in accordance with government auditing standards. So the bottom paragraph is the opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects, the respective financial position of the governmental activities, each major fund, and the aggregate remaining fund information of the City of Critten in Kentucky as of June 30, 2019, and the respective changes in the financial position thereof for the year then ended in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America. This is referred to as an unmodified or a clean opinion on financial statements. On page 2, there's also required supplementary information included. That information includes management's discussion and analysis, budgetary comparison information, and schedules required for the pension and the OPEC liabilities. Audit standards do not require us to express an opinion on those, and we have not done so. There's a schedule combining statement of expenditures included, and we have expressed an opinion on that as well, that it is fairly stated in all material respects in relation to the financial statements as a whole. The page 3 starts the management's discussion and analysis. I'll go through this, highlighting one of the significant points, the financial highlights show that the assets and deferred inflows of the city exceeded its liabilities and deferred outflows by $4.3 million at the end of the year. The net position of the city increased by $226,000 during the year, and the fund balance was $3.4 million. On page 4 and 5, you'll find two tables showing the balance sheet or the assets and liabilities and net position of the city for 2019 compared to 2018. And then on table 2, you'll see revenues and expenses for the same periods. This is really the only part in the statements that you'll have comparative year-to-year. You can see on the table 1, the total assets increased by about $300,000 during the year, liabilities increased by about $50,000, creating an overall increase of about $300,000 during the year in fund position, or net position.
Could I pause and ask a question at this point? That asset increase, I guess, was the purchase of the trailer court?
That was a significant part of it, there, that was about $441,000, well, the total fixed assets, capital assets increased.
From a forward-looking standpoint, and my question's more toward next year, let's say we sold that property, I'm picking a wild number, $500,000, does that increase in value, subject to short-term capital gains, or is it long-term capital, how's that treated for a city?
You don't have any tax filings with Internal Revenue Service that would have capital gain applications on that.
So there is no additional cost if we sold for a profit?
Correct. It would be recognized as revenue, or a gain in your audit report, in your income statement, but there's no tax consequences.
And the depreciation for that land, how is it?
Land is not depreciated. It's an asset that is not depreciated. Buildings, improvements on land, those are depreciated over anywhere from 15 to 39 years.
Thank you.
Table 2, the total revenues for the year went up about $29,000, total expenses from last year were up about $153,000, but again, your net increase in net position was $226,000. On page 6, at the bottom there, the capital assets, here it is noted that during the year, assets valued at $441,000 were added, and depreciation during the year was $59,000. And Kristin is going to continue on page 8 with the statement of net position. So on page 8, you'll have the statement of net position. This is on the full accrual basis of accounting, so this will include your capital assets and long-term liabilities. So they had total assets of $4.6 million, and then total deferred outflows of resources were $72,000, total liabilities, total $400,000, and then total deferred inflows of resources were roughly $6,000, resulting in the net position of about $4.3 million. So that's page 8. On page 9 is the statement of activities. This is, first begins with the expenses reported by governmental activities of $953,000, and then we show the charges for services, $89,000, operating grants and contributions are maybe around $82,000, and then below that is reported the general revenues, about $1 million, which are your taxes. This resulted in a change of net position of $226,000. And then you have the ending net position of the $4.3 million. On page 10 is the balance sheet. Total assets here reported were $3.5 million, total liabilities of close to $77,000, resulting in the fund balance of $3.4 million. And then page 11 is the reconciliation of the balance sheet of governmental funds to the statement of net position. So reconciling the fund balance of $3.4 million to the net position of $4.3 million. Those differences are your capital assets and long-term liabilities, which in the city's case is related to the pension and OPEC. On page 12 is the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance. There's total revenues of $1.1 million, total expenditures of $1.3 million, resulting in a decrease in the fund balance of $132,000. Page 38, kind of jumping ahead there, is work out of those expenditures by function, just so you know as well. And then page 13 shows the reconciliation of the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance of governmental funds to the statement of activities. So this is taking that decrease of $132,000 in fund balance and reconciling that to the change in net position of $226,000, which again, your differences are going to be related to the capital asset expenditures, and then your expenses related to the pension and OPEC. Stephanie's going to go for the notes for the financial statements. So the notes, the notes begin on page 14 and continue, continuing to page 20 is note 1, which is the summary of significant accounting policies for the city. These are all very similar to the same accounting policies the city's had in the past, new policies adopted, or that were required to be adopted this year. If you flip to page 20, note 2, concentration of credit risk. This is a disclosure required related to bank balances. At the end of the fiscal year, the balances were approximately $3.3 million, and all of that was either insured by federal deposit insurance or collateral pledge by the banks that's required. The capital asset note 3 on page 21 shows your change in those fixed assets from the beginning of the year to the end of the fiscal year.
Could we pause here for a moment? It's a question I asked last year, under the capital asset, I'm going to sound like a broken record, of the street improvements that's depreciated over 20 years.
Yeah.
Most of the street repairs we do there are potholes, spreading tar, it's not like you're building a section of a new street that's going to last for 20 years. I don't know of potholes that last 20 years. Is there any wiggle room on making a more accurate depreciation schedule for street repairs?
Minor repairs are generally are not capitalized. I felt like, I don't know that those small repairs are included in the number of $104,000, that there were maybe one or two street projects that were done included in that.
Does anyone remember any big street improvements that would fall into like one lump sum category? They're all potholes. You're spreading tar and cracks. My concern is, over a period of time, 10 or 20 years from now, we have all this depreciation on books, it's not realistic.
Well, we also consider what we take off then, too.
Sure, you take a shorter, shorter period, yeah.
Stephanie, you cannot interrupt.
I think, I think we had some repairs off Pinhook, they did a bunch of concrete work, Jim Livingston had that finished, and...
They blacked on Fairway, actually.
Yeah, Fairway Drive was all, it was from the beginning to the end, they milled it up and then blacktopped it, and that's quite a big...
My only point to the council here, and to our accounting experts here, is can we pass the red face test, that 20 years is an actual capitalization for street repairs? That seems awfully long to me, at least from what I've seen. That's my only statement, and my concern is over capitalizing this over the long term. I'm not asking for any changes, but I'd like for some consideration, maybe next year we can really talk about it.
Note 4 starts on page 21 at the bottom and goes to page 25. This is your employee's pension plan note. This is probably... But there were maybe one or two street projects that were done, included in that.
Does anyone remember any big street improvements that would fall into like one lump sum category? They're all potholes. You're spreading tar and cracks. My big concern is, over a period of time, 10 or 20 years from now, we have all this depreciation on books, it's not realistic.
But we also consider what we take off then, too.
Sure, it's in a shorter, shorter period, yeah.
Stephanie, can I interrupt? I think, I think we had some repairs out in Pinhook, they did a bunch of concrete work. Jim Livingston had that finished, and if I'm not mistaken...
They blacked on Fairway last year.
Fairway, yeah. Yeah, Fairway Drive was all, it was from the beginning to the end, they milled it up and then blacktopped it. And that's quite a big...
My only point to the council here, and to our accounting experts here, is can we pass the red face test that 20 years is an actual capitalization for street repairs? That seems awfully long to me, at least from what I've seen. That's my only statement. And my concern is, over capitalizing this over the long term. I'm not asking for any changes, but I'd like for some consideration. Next year, we can really talk about it.
Note 4 starts on page 21 at the bottom and goes to 20, page 25. This is your employee's pension plan note. This is probably the fifth or sixth year that you've been required to disclose the unfunded liability related to the pension plan. So the liability at the end of last year was $250,000. And the city's proportion of the total overall state liability was only .0041%. So a very minor percentage, but it amounted to $250,000. And all of this information in note 4 and 5 comes directly from the state's retirement plan that's required to be disclosed. Note 5 was a new note last year on post-employment benefits, so the health insurance benefit portion of the retirement plan. And on page 26, it shows the liability at the end of the fiscal year was $73,000. Starting page 30 through 33, our schedules are related to both the pension liability, the pension fund contributions that were made, and the OPEP or retirement benefit related to health insurance. So this is a historical schedule from when implementation was required in 2015. You can see the liabilities increased from $134,000 at that time to the $250,000 now. The contributions that were required annually have always been made, and they started six years ago at $13,000, and they're about $18,000 annually in 2019. And then the health insurance portion just increased slightly, a couple thousand dollars, since it's required to be implemented. Pages 34 is a budgetary comparison schedule of just the general fund. It shows your original budget and your final budget, and then your actual revenues and appropriations or expenses on a budget basis, which is a cash basis, not the modified accrual that the government fund financial statements require to be reported on. So you can see on a budget basis, actual revenues exceeded budgeted revenues by $125,000, and the expenditures on a budgetary basis were $171,000 than the budget amount.
I do have questions. So on our employees, our current employees, what, our full-time employees, what is the percentage of, which one of these figures, I can't tell, is it that we are paying into retirement?
On page 31, the retirement contribution for last fiscal year was 16.2%. And the health insurance contribution was about 5.25%. So it was just like 21.18% for the last fiscal year. Page 35 through 37 are notes related to those supplemental schedules. On page 38, Kristen kind of mentioned this. This is detail of your expenditures. So you can see those expenses. And then lastly, on page 41 is our second report that we issued part of a governmental audit on...